Comment that hasn't been mentioned or something to add to the conversation, I would encourage that you give a brief statement. If you would simply like to stand up and say, "I support what's been said." That was my comment, but it's already been mentioned. That would be great, too. If the board here is okay with that, I can go down. Is that okay with the audience, just to keep things as simple as possible? So feel free to stand up and say you support something that's been said. If you have something new, we'll give everybody a couple of minutes to say something. So I'll go down the list. We have a question in regards to that.
No, just if you raise your hand, our deputy clerk will actually bring you a microphone.
Yeah, we'll bring a mic around. I got a whole list of the roster here, so it says if you'd like to speak, I'll just go down this list till we get through everybody. First on my list here, Mr. Randy Gold.
He left.
He left, okay. Rob Knutson, it was a maybe. He left. John Smith.
I support everything that's been said by the commissioners as far as this program. I, oh, thank you.
So I support everything that the commissioners have said. We need metrics. Second, I think it's terrible to insinuate that we don't care about people. We do. That's why we're here. Thirdly, I'm a minister and I'm a pastor, and so I not only minister in this community, but I also minister in Josephine County, which has an SSP program. You talk to them. The drug use is exacerbated. The homeless issue is exacerbated. The SSP program is not helping them. What needs to happen is, again, we need to restrain evil, not condone it or enable it. As the Bible says, and I'll end my point, Proverbs, Chapter 12, verse 10, says this, "The compassion of the wicked is cruel."
Um, I, who's that? Oh, that looks like Randy Agnew.
He already left.
Already left.
Dr. Peterson.
Left. Richard Black.
I have about eight points, but I'm not going to try to make them all. But I would like to talk about the harm reduction appointments. It's a euphemism for a whole lot of things that I don't agree with, okay? But one of the data points that I think you ought to take a look at is the low-barrier facility that was mandated in order to maintain state funding for our city has generated some significant inflow of potential people from the West Side that are drug users, and it's enabled them to do that. And I think that's a data point that you should take into consideration. If you remove the barrier or lower the barrier, they will come. And in this case, if you're giving a clean syringe, that's lowering the barrier, and people will use them. They will exchange them. You will get an opportunity to talk to them, but you're enabling their continued drug use. And I respect the young man here who comes out of that background from Grant County. But your problem, I think, I think it was a fair question, and I think it was a deterrent. Now, I happen to come from a military background, and one of the things that works globally is a deterrent. We don't want war. Soldiers don't want war. Doctors don't want to be treating people who are overdosing. That's part of the reason why you want the barrier high, and you want people to be afraid of using a dirty needle. You don't want them to be using any needle, and that is care. I support the idea of a mobile medical health facility. There are a lot of people who have a lot of needs medically that aren't being treated appropriately or adequately. I could support that, but not giving them needles. I agree, Commissioner, that's like giving them the gun to commit suicide. It's just done with a different form. It's not with lead, it's with some other injection. Who is funding this effort? That's a rhetorical question. I think we should all know, and the public should know, who's granting the money? It's not hopefully coming out of our taxpayers' funds, okay? But if it's a state grant, then by all means, the county commissioners should know that that's coming through there and being allocated to their county. And oh, by the way, they should be able to stop it and ask that it be defunded and take action on your part to defund it. We fear the spreading of this problem of addiction to our schools, and we fear it going to our city parks and our parks and recreation programs. And I can guarantee you, if this mobile facility is roaming around our multiple counties, the people who want those needles are going to be spreading them where a lot of our families and our children are supposed to be playing in a risk-free environment. That is not supportable. I, I...
I'm sorry, but we're at time. Thank you so much.
Mr. Jezdal.
Hi, my name's Chelsea Porter.
Well...
Chelsea, yep.
Hold on one second here. We got an online person? Are we, Mr. Jezdal?
And we got to keep this to a minute, just a reminder.
Yeah, just...
My name is Harvey Jezdal. I was in law enforcement 33 years. I was 12 years as a sheriff over in Douglas County. I oppose it. Oh, I'm sorry. First of all, these people obviously have big hearts that want to help people. I'm going to be transparent, too, and say, I think it was a little bit arrogant not to come to these gentlemen first. I know that you can do this whether we like it or not, but this should have been a starting point. There are representatives. I think the paradigm is wrong. I think the paradigm, I kind of agree with the doctor, the paradigm should be that there's consequences for bad behavior. I think that societally, nationwide and here, we're creating a safety net for bad behavior. Drugs create crime, violent crime, property crimes, sex crimes, and it's encouraging it. By giving the needles, we're being part of the problem. The paradigm should be that there are consequences for our behavior. There's got to be accountability. And I'm ex-law enforcement, ex-military, and I'm with the doctor in saying that I think it works better. I think we need to go back to that. It worked for a long, long time, and since we've changed that paradigm to creating safety nets for people, it's kind of become less, it's become more in vogue to just continue to behave badly. Thank you for your time.
Hi, but muted. Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah, we can take an online comment real quick. Who is this? Can you identify yourself for the record?
Absolutely, I will. My name's Jackie Weber, and I am a registered nurse. I grew up in this valley, and I've lived in this valley my entire life. Been a nurse for 27 years. Not once have I seen a needle kill someone. What kills people are drugs, not needles. I fully agree that we need consequences for actions and that people need to be punished and that that is a process that needs to be worked on. Joey can attest that that did not work. Joey was incarcerated multiple occasions, did not get the help he needed. Until we can implement the help that is needed where it's at, we will make no progress at all. Again, drugs kill people, needles do not. I deal with people who are impatient, the Medicaid population, that are impatient for medical reasons. I can guarantee you that the medical, what we as a community spend on Medicaid and fixing the infections and fixing the medical problems is far more expensive and far bigger of a problem than an exchange program. If we allow people to live their life, shoot up the drugs they want to shoot up with a clean needle, what we are doing is we are helping our healthcare system decrease the amount of infections, amount of illnesses, and that kind of things. All of these things need to be looked at. You're looking at them through shaded lenses. You're not seeing the full picture. We are trying to help people with this SSP program. We are not trying to enable people. We are trying to make friends. It doesn't work if you do not come down to these people's level, talk to them in a manner that they want to be talked to at and offer the help when they're ready.
Thank you, Jackie. We are at time.
All right, next it has Joseph Hunter. Okay, all right. Julie Rickard.
That's me.
Oh, sorry. Just going down the list. Michael Scholl.
I moved to Wenatchee from Los Angeles in 1972 to work in a church. And one of the first things I thought is, man, this is really a different community. It's drug-free, it's crime-free, it's, you know... And the kids in the church started telling me that they knew the houses in Cashmere, where they could go and buy heroin. And I thought, oh, that's dumb, you know? If they know where it is, the police probably know where it is. Why don't we clean this up? Why don't we clean up the drug part? It's, were talking to me, and I tried to think of a good illustration, but it's like a guy that has a boil on his neck or something, and every morning he gets up and puts a Band-Aid on it and goes about the day, when he should get the thing last and cleaned up and whatever. So I think we're dealing with the bottom part of this problem, and I realize I'm out of context, but we, as, and I was a former police reserve officer, I think that we should have a task force come in every once in a while. I don't know how to do it, but we need to get the suppliers out of here and the drugs out of here and then deal with the people that are addicts and addicted. That's all I have to say.
Morgan Robbins.
I just have two questions. Who would hold you accountable if it hurts the community? Who is the person to call the shots and pull the plug? And for the mobile unit, will there be security or safety measures in place for those in the van to protect them? Thank you.
Do you wish to answer any of those questions, or you use this whole process?
I guess I can answer, I can't answer the second question right off the bat. When you talk about accountability, right, part of that's going to be tied to funding and accountability results, so we would be ensuring that the program is successful. I would want to echo a little bit, too, and I'm sorry if I'm on a minute of time, that, you know, I recognize a number of the concerns that have been shared out there, and I want to share that none of us are going in at it with liners up as well, and some of those same thoughts and concerns always interconnect through people, but really, the success and what you can see with an SSP program and connecting individuals with services, it's really trying to find where that individual is at. I can't remember your second question.
How would you protect the people in the van? It was mentioned that needles have been stolen if it's needed, not necessarily from this kind of a thing, but the doctors said people who want needles will steal them. So how are you going to protect the people in the van from being attacked for the needles? If you're not going to give it to them, if there is some kind of limit to what they can have, or if they just want to take it, what's going to stop them?
That, I feel like that changes the whole accountability and the outcome that we're talking about. That's going to skew your inventory of what is being out into the community.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't want to take up too much of the public comment time, because I know we only have so much left, but I would love for you to take my card and we can have a further conversation. I'm not deferring this question. I just want to say this is a more in-depth conversation I would love to have. So please take my information, the work group, these are things that we've definitely thought about and are concerned about, but I also want to make sure that everybody has a chance to be able to say what they want to say.
Thank you. We got to move on.
All right.
Angela.
I do have a question. What? Well, I'm...
Are we through the list?
Hmm, we're...
Well, I have a question for you, Rachel, and I would like to take your card, and I'd like to ask some more in the future, but you asked us to think outside the box, which I am willing to do, but then put us right back into a box and said that we don't care. I very much care, because I had a father who was an addict and still is an addict, and to this day has never taken responsibility for his part of it, so I do feel where you guys are coming from. I do feel. But this affects more than just the drug addict. This affects the world. And I personally chose to take my children out of that situation. I was adopted by my stepdad, and my question to you is, if my child in the future, Lord help me that this doesn't happen, but gets into drugs and gets a safe needle injection from your mobile van, who am I supposed to hold accountable if my child overdoses with that, the fork that you gave to the person to feed themselves, essentially? That's, that's what I, as a person, a citizen, want to know, because, you know, it goes back to the same argument of, take all the guns away, they're still going to find a way to get a gun.
Thank you. I have a comment from someone that I deleted. I'll just read real quick. It's from Chad Holiday, owns a local business here in South Wenatchee. Said, "Rachel, why is it not okay for you to take on a brick-and-mortar facility for this program, but is it okay for a mobile unit to be dispatched around our residences and our businesses where our livelihoods are located?" So that was his comment. Can you state your name with the microphone, please?
Yeah, my name is Michelle Jones, and I just live right down the street from the Moonlight Motel. And I don't know if many of you are aware of it, and I know you guys are, but that is a very drug-infested motel at the north end of Wenatchee. I live right down the street. We can't walk down the street without finding plenty of needles that they use one or twice and discard. And when I talk to these people, and we do, because we minister to them as well, they tell us that, you know, I'm trying to get them clean, you know, I'm trying to stay clean. They leave their home, they leave their mobile home or whatever it is, and they go outside into our, into our yards to do their drugs. So I want to know exactly what you just asked. Why is it, why is it not okay for you to give out these needles? I would ask you to ask yourself, why is it not okay for you to give out these needles at the YWCA? But you're going to take a van around our community and let it go? And then, gentlemen from the Al-Anon Club, John, I think, I would also like you just to ask yourself, do a moral inventory and find out if not just going to jail and not your sister that took you to the Al-Anon Club, but all of the different steps that took you to get to that step. You said it takes about eight touches to get somebody to get help? I agree, it probably takes a lot more than that, but there's other ways to do that in our community, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Bill Sullivan. I'm a resident of Shalan County. So, board members, thank you for your tough questioning. I wish you would talk to our local Board of Health. Facts matter, and what we learned over the past three years is that we don't necessarily need to trust the experts at face value. If you are going to come here and present this to us, we need hard evidence that these programs, needle exchange specifically, needle exchange specifically, leads to harms, quote, harms reduction and lowers addictions. So here are some facts for you all. There were three cases of HIV in 2021 in Shalan and Douglas Counties. HIV has a case fatality rate of 0.5% or less. Only 7% of HIV cases are for intravenous drug use. If we're talking about blood-borne pathogens again here, Hep C is the other one. The whole impetus for this needle exchange program, Hep C, there was zero cases in 2021 in Shalan and Douglas County, according to Department of Health. Hep C has a case fatality rate of 3/1,000th of a percent, okay? But meanwhile, in Shalan and Douglas County, according to Shalan Douglas County Health Officer, there's been 1,000% increase in opioid deaths over the past six years. According to Wayne Harris, Shalan County Coroner, there were 31 overdose deaths in Shalan County alone. I am here to argue, members of our community, if they're drug users, they are three to four orders of magnitude, okay? Orders of magnitude more likely to die from the drug overdose that you all enable than they are from one of these blood-borne pathogens. Lastly, I would advise or recommend that the joint boards of commissioners from both counties look into passing an ordinance specifically prohibiting this program, okay? And if anybody tries to do it, aside, I would ask you to consult your prosecuting attorneys about potentially prosecuting them under RCW 6950-412, which prohibits delivery of drug paraphernalia for use in preparation of a controlled substance.
Thank you.
Kyle, can you finish the list first? Because those people signed up first, and then we will address those that are not on the list.
All right. So Mark Weatherford.
Thank you. It's Mark Weatherold, Eastern Wenatchee. I have nine grandchildren, five of which live in Eastern Wenatchee. Compassion is certainly needed here. However, I don't think that enabling and legitimizing self-destructive behavior should be confused with compassion. Greater bureaucracy and more bureaucrats doesn't seem to be the answer to me. I haven't seen good results of bureaucracy and bureaucrats lately. And a comment was made that the CDC and the NIH are reputable organizations. After the last three years, I would challenge that statement.
Thank you. Donna Jean Bradley. Brady, sorry.
Hi, I've got a little different take on that. Myself being a previous user and abuser for 16 years, I would never have wanted somebody to approach me with a needle to make it easier for me to die. And yes, needles can kill you. Fentanyl injections are killing people every day, and I don't, you know, I would venture to guess if they snorted it or smoked it, it would be a far less likelihood of death because the injection is the most fatal drug use. I have very much compassion for addicts. I've been clean for 30-plus years, so that's, praise the Lord for that. I have a lot of compassion for addicts, but there are other ways that we can entice them for help. If we're going to go with a mobile van, I would say, how about cigarettes? They all, you know, let's offer them something that's not going to kill them to help them come to a place. And yes, to all the mobile help, health-wise.
Thank you. Mike Gordon. Or Mike Jordan Gordon. Nope, left, okay. Kay Cuskey.
I'm Kay Cuskey-Adam, and, you know, I've sat here almost ready to blow up. I was sure my head was going to fall, blow off my shoulders. You know, you can talk about all kinds of statistics, but I live with one. I, at 62, I am now 72, I adopted my grandson. So for 11 years, I've had to tell him why his mom wanted heroin more than he did him. I will tell you that I have offered to talk to all kinds of groups about what this really means, what kind of a, what addicts, you know, what they are doing to families and et cetera, et cetera. All of these things are great, but to say we don't care is really, really offensive. I didn't think I was going to be raising a child at 72, but I am, and I have a lot of questions ahead for him. To give an addict a needle, a clean needle, you talk about you don't want to take your kids to the park because there's needles. You're adding one more needle to that park. They don't care. An addict does not care about getting clean when they are in active addiction. They want another hit. So as far as handing them, you know, some people have said the bullet or the gun or whatever, that's exactly what's happening. We need to go back a lot farther than all of a sudden buying a couple vans and going around and taking needles around. This is a problem that goes way back. That's, that's just a Band-Aid that really won't stick very long. So I encourage our commissioners to really take that into consideration, that this is, it's just out of order. It's just not going to work, and I am really opposed to it.
Thank you. Darlene Crum.
I have a family member that is a recovering addict. She's been clean and sober for 13 years, and so I texted her yesterday to tell her about the meeting. And ask her her opinion on what she thought about this program. And she said, "Either way, you lose. If you don't provide the needles, then people are spreading hepatitis and HIV. If you do hand out the needles, it can create a lot of problems in the neighborhood, like it did up in Vancouver when they had one open a few years ago." She said, "I don't know." But I, as a, as a mother, as a parent, know that if you, if you were out there handing out needles to my family member, I would come after you. I may not be able to get to the drug dealer, but I would get to the representative or the appointed people or whoever's volunteering, and I'm with these other people. We have compassion, and we want this solved, but you're going to have to go to the source, which is, I agreed with the person online who said, "Drugs are the ones that's killing people, and we need to go to the source where the drugs are coming from, and that's where it starts, not with the needles." And then I had a thought while sitting here, if we can fire people for not taking an experimental drug shot and fire them, they'll lose their job, their livelihood, whatever. If we can do that, if we can force people, if we can force children to take a vaccine that is an experimental one, then why can't we force drug-addicted people into treatment?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention a few comments. If you've never volunteered with organizations here in town that help folks who are addicted or homeless or a different place than where you've already volunteered, I would recommend the YWCA and reach out to the center and see if they have volunteer opportunities. I appreciate that some of you are family members of addicts or former addicts. You have walked a journey, and again, Julie pointed out that everybody walks a different journey as an addict. We are trying to reach some people through having a safe needle exchange program. It's not that anybody can walk up and get a needle. You have to exchange it. We'd be cleaning up parks. So if you're not concerned about your children or grandchildren or pets stepping on a dirty needle, well, I think your fear is misplaced. So, anyway, I just want to summarize. Also, Mr. Dick Black, Rachel Todd actually stated the financial sources for this program. You just need to listen. So I heard her, and I was sitting in the same row as you, and I have hearing aids, so maybe that helps. Thank you.
Thank you, Time. Devin Schwab, or Davin Schwab.
My name's David Schwab. I would be willing to pay higher taxes for enforcement of local and state laws. I support incarceration and rehabilitation of lawbreakers in lieu of looking the other way in the name of compassion for individuals who are hurting themselves and others by their habits. I believe Shalan and Douglas County have to agree on enforcing existing laws. Shalan and Douglas County have agreed on joint fire protection and other joint ventures to enhance the living conditions of our valley. I hope you can find an alternative to encouraging the use of illegal drugs from a needle exchange program. I want my fellow Shalan and Douglas County residents, friends, neighbors, and businesses to live a quality of life equal to the values of North Central Washington, not King County, Thurston.
Thank you. Michelle Jones. You spoke. Is there, that's the last of my list. Is there one last chance for public comment? If anybody hasn't spoke, please.
And we do have some people online as well that have questions or comments.
Hi, my name's Kayla Hauk, and I'm from YWCA, North Central Washington, and I would just like to say that I support everything that Ms. Todd has said, as well as Ms. Rickard, sorry, if I get the pronunciation wrong, and as well as the people that have came with her. I think this is all something that the community kind of needs to keep an open mind with. We're all uncomfortable with this topic, but it's definitely a topic that needs to be talked more about, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I, too, have dealt with several loved ones in my life that are addicts, and... are addicts, and one was recently down in Arizona. They have an excellent program. It's called the Phoenix Rescue Mission. If you go online and check them out, no, we are not as big as they are, but they offer hope to people. They have a hope coach that goes out all the time. They don't offer needles. They just come out and talk. They bring water, they bring sodas, they just talk. You don't have to bring needles.
Is there anybody else in our audience here today before we go? Looks like two more people. State your name first, please.
My name's Kim Darlington. I've worked in this valley as a pharmacist for 30 years, and I've had a lot of experience with syringes and drug users, and giving them the syringes does not work. More people, and your Field of Dreams analogy, we were talking that same exact analogy before we came in here. And I got the chance to go to LA last week through Seattle, and we all know what Seattle looks like. Well, LA is even worse. And when we were catching an Uber, I got to go talk to a fireman that was resuscitating a man on the sidewalk and with Narcan, and I talked to him, and he said that this is a weekly thing and that the same person is resuscitated every week with the two fire trucks there. And I just, we really care, but the SSP is not the answer.
Thank you.
I'm Roger Wells. I'm a resident of Chelan County, and I put on there that, no, I didn't want to comment, but I decided I do want to comment, because this is a hot and hard, this is a hard subject to most of us, because we don't want to be involved. And that, your example of giving out a needle so that you can have time to speak to somebody, that sounds good on the surface, but I can attest that I have worked with drug addicts, and I'm kind of proud in a way to say that one of them that I worked with is now a full-time employee at Lighthouse. And I never offered any needles, I never offered any drugs, but I was always there for him, and they're willing to talk to us if we're willing to talk to them, and it doesn't require the exchange of a needle. And once we interject something like giving out a needle or giving out whatever else that might be that is negative in the long run, in my opinion, this is all becomes a lot of opinion, but once you open that door to give out needles, it's a hard, hard door to close. And I can just, I'm giving you as an example personally, that it can happen without giving out needles.
Thank you. Tiffany, do you want to, I can't really see the online thing that well. Do you want to monitor that?
Yes. Deana, do you want to unmute and ask your question, please?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just looking at this from a land use perspective as a community development director. So my question was, where are these SSP mobile sites going to be located? Because I think we need to also look at another aspect of this as to the neighborhood impacts should be a consideration. Food trucks are not allowed just anywhere in either county, so where is the land use and compatibility analysis for this?
Thank you, Deana. Does Sasha have a question? Is there anything underneath? I can't see. Thank you. So is there anyone else online that wishes to ask a question or make a comment? Please raise your hand. Sasha, you unmuted. Would you like to speak?
Yes, can you hear me?
You're breaking up. Okay, Sasha, try again, please. There we go.
Let's try this device. Can you hear me, Commissioner?
We can hear you.
Thank you. Hi, Sasha Sflamen, Eastern Wenatchee City Council. I just wanted to say thank you to Joey and Rachel and Dr. Rickard, Joey for sharing your story, and for Rachel and Dr. Richard for sharing the facts and information on this. It's a really nuanced and complicated topic, but at the end of the day, again, just want to clarify and reiterate the word "exchange" since we keep using the word "give out" quite often, but thank you all for sharing your stories. I think Commissioner Steinberg, I think it was, I think there are other elected officials out in other municipalities who are supportive of this, and I would like to also remind everybody that they are a private nonprofit, and the funding is not coming from neither Chelan nor Douglas County, so let's just remember that, that this is a private nonprofit. So I'm confused as to our role as electeds in this conversation. So thanks again, everyone, for sharing. It's a really meaningful topic, and it impacts so many people, so thanks.
Thank you, Sasha. Is there anyone else online that wishes to comment or ask a question? Okay, I don't see anyone else. Last chance here in the audience. Yes.
Sorry, I don't know if we have a chance to, like, close out a little bit, but, you know, again, I would extend my thanks to the commissioners to have an opportunity to have this discussion. I recognize, and we all recognize, we were going to come into this discussion knowing that you guys weren't going to be 100% behind us or even backing us, period. So I respect that there is differences in this conversation, and I would always open up to continue that conversation as this moves forward. We are going to be doing it to, we're going to be operating the program and working with the YWCA to have a wonderful program, and we are always going to be there to talk to and have conversations with the county commissioners. So just wanted to put that out there as well. I know we all disagree on this topic, but we all, you know, are looking at the best interests of all the residents in our community, including those who are the most marginalized and those the most separate out. And I say that to everyone in this room.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I do. Again, I want to extend my thanks, you know, it's kind of a, you know, you knew coming into this that there were going to be some concerns. You know, I made that abundantly clear to you all with regards, well, at least to Rachel and John, when I reached out to you to bring you here to have this conversation with us, that the Board of County Commissioners has concerns about this. We have concerns about it being implemented in our community. I don't know if information we received today will change those concerns, but at the end of the day, I look forward to continued dialogue. And what I would challenge you with is, you've heard from a lot of folks here today within our community that represents also another spectrum of the community, that perhaps we can look at something here. While you do have funding for a syringe program, exchange program, I would also challenge the fact that sometimes it's okay not to take the funding, but maybe for the first time, we can actually look at alternatives to maybe something like this, where we actually have the participation of the very people that were in this room, to maybe make a difference and actually create a different program for outreach versus exchanging with needles. That would just be my comment.
Thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate your time and how candid you were able to be sharing information with us. Really appreciate it. Okay, you need to adjourn.
I will adjourn for me, myself, and I. My other two are not here, so...
Okay, and I will adjourn at the Chelan County Board of Commissioners until next Monday.